This is 2625 to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's clarify, United States of America, and truly public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
I don't know if you are aware, but on the table in the foyer, there are two documents. One that lists the various methods we're going to be discussing, and the other is an updated question and answer fact sheet that the town has prepared for you. Mark?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd just like to go through the process tonight. I'll just go over a quick, updated, frequently asked question sheet. You have a copy. We've made one correction to it. It's a word. We fixed that for the public's consideration. Then Maria Guerrero will just kind of reiterate what she, how we're going to move forward, our strategy. Jerry Lukowski and Dave McMahon will then go over the three, the three suggested repayment methods, and we'll just go quickly over on how to read a bill. So the frequently asked question document is basically, these are a lot of the questions that we are currently hearing from the town side. And again, it's, you know, what is the financial impact if the referendum does not pay? And it's basically the accumulation of $355,000 in interest per month, $4.3 million per year. The question that we hear a lot is also, how would the town cover payments without bonding? And basically, we'd have to go back to alternative rate assessments. We'd have to go through that, and WSA would have to reevaluate and decide whether we go through direct impact payments to ratepayers, or do we just increase the rates? What is the average cost impact? I'm not going to go through this. Mr. Lukowski and Mr. McMahon will go through this and identify that as it relates to the bonding. And one of the bigger questions that's out there is, can the state Clean Water Fund provide financial assistance? That's highly unlikely. We've been in contact with the state. There are some strings that come attached to using the Clean Water Fund Act, but it's basically geared towards infrastructure, and this is, this will be a bailout for the town of Watertown. So at this point in time, that's not something that we feel would move us forward on this issue. So that, if ratepayers or taxpayers are considering that to be a viable option, at this point, we do not believe that's a viable option. Again, Watertown has a very strong AA bond rating, and we're just two positions below top bond rating. Our initial course of action is to go through a banding process where we take short-term notes to address the issue, and we would begin payment back on this bond issuance in the next budget year. Will the town be able to refinance in the future is another question we get quite often, and yes, as if we were to bond this at four and a quarter percent and rates drop into the threes, we would have an opportunity to go back and refinance if it was fiscally responsible for us to do that. And then another question that continues to come up is, what if the town sells its water and sewer system? That's a secondary issue that we'll have to reevaluate if the referendum were not to pass, or if the referendum were to pass, and we wanted to consider that. Those are the things that we'll have to talk about down the road. But if we were to sell that system, we could take those proceeds and apply it to whatever bond issuance may have taken place. And then one very important question that I hear quite often is, could liens be placed by the City of Waterbury on an individual's home if the referendum fails? And the answer is no. Liens by the City of Waterbury cannot be put on the individual resident's home, and it was clearly stated in the document supplied by the court. Those are the eight questions that we have that's in addition to what's already online, and we will have this up online in the morning as well. Maria?
Good evening. I just wanted to stress the importance on how the town plans to make their payments, and this is by location. And the strategy is to pay down each location so the interest gets paid off, and we are current on all our bills. So in terms of the presentation I presented last time, just reiterating that the goal is to pay down by-location interest first. That way, we're, at the end of the day, we're only left with our current bills moving forward to save.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I forgot to have a roll call. Sue, would you be kind enough to do that?
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken DeMears.
Here.
Robert DeSina.
Here.
Anthony DeBona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Karina Noid.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here. Thank you.
Through the chair. May I ask a question with Mark?
Sure.
Mark, could you give me an example, just for clarification, of a special assessment or an example of any of the ones that are just being currently discussed, just so we can get some examples?
So I do, yes, I could give you an example. One of the considerations would be, and I'm not saying this would happen, so I don't want this to be out there as, this is an actual consideration, but at some point, we can look at individual properties and say, we take the $24 million divided up amongst the 4,300 to 4,500 ratepayers, and that would be an assessment on that property. So those are the things that we're going to have to look at if this referendum were not to pass, or it's an alternative way for us to accumulate revenue to pay the debt.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Lukowski?
Good evening. Jerry Lukowski, Director of Public Works. I'm going to be going over the debt allocation scenarios that we have, and just a few assumptions that I'll just outline. We did work with NewGen. They're a company who does rate studies, and we just wanted expertise to review our numbers. So the first one is the debt principle is at $30 million, reduced by a one-time $6 million contribution from the Watertown Fire District, resulting in net debt of $24 million to be bonded over 20 years. We looked at interest rate models of 3%, 4%, and 5%. And with the customer base of 4,300 accounts, and with our average annual water usage of 300 million gallons per year. We looked at, these are our three scenarios, equal shared approach between all 4,300 customers. The other one is usage-based approach, costs are recovered based on the individual water usage. And the third one is a hybrid approach, where each account pays a fixed $150 annual charge plus the cost recovered based on usage. I do have two boards I'm also going to put up. It's the same thing as the slides on the screen. So the equal share is that it's, for 3%, it's $375 per year. These are all per year. 4% is 411, and 5% is 448. We're assuming we're going to be more at a 4% interest rate. So you'll see the 411 in the future slide, the summary slide. The usage-based approach is based on 1,000 gallons of usage. You could see that, what it costs between the different percentage rates for interest. It'll all come together on the next slide. And then the hybrid approach, you could see the usage base is lower because there's a $150 annual charge. So this is the summary slide. This is based on 4%. So if it was all equal shares, it's $411. We don't, we don't consider this one a viable option, but we do consider the other two as a viable option, which is, the average resident is 50,000 gallons per year, or 12,500 gallons per quarter, which is on the bill. And the usage base, it would be $295. Under the hybrid amount, it would be $337, which is your $150 yearly, plus the usage that come up with $337. You could see the other scenarios for low residential use, high residential, and small businesses. And this is only an illustrative cost. It's going to be close to this. It's not going to be these exact numbers, but it should be $5, $10, $15, $20 within these numbers, and this is for the year to pay off the debt. The one thing why I do stress a little bit more on hybrid is, we have just over 3,000 residential customers and 1,000 commercial and industrial customers. The average for a residential, how we came up with $50,000, the exact number is 49,864 gallons per year. And for the total gallons, it's 158 million gallons a year for residents. It's 143,000, 143 million gallons per year for commercial industrial. So the ratio from residential to commercial industrial is three to one, and the ratio for gallons is basically one to one. The, I said 300 million gallons a year, we use 301 million gallons a year. That's the exact number over the past year, or 827,000 gallons a day. So the top 10 users use 49 million gallons a year. If they all left, we would lose 982 customers, an equivalent of the 50,000 gallons per residential. They use 16.2% of the water in Watertown. The top user by far is 23 million gallons a year. If they left, it would be 461 customers, equivalent customers leaving the system, or 7.6% of the usage. And that's why I think it's really tough to decide between the usage base or the hybrid base, because we want to keep those larger customers in the town, and because if someone left, it would, the ratios wouldn't work out, and everybody's rates would go up again. So that's what I had to focus on, was on the debt allocation. If you have any questions before Dave takes over.
Madam Chairwoman, I have a question.
Yes.
In proper order. Jerry, could you touch base why we use NewGen strategies for this process?
We used NewGen because they are, they have worked on our rates over the years, and they're the experts at doing this. It's a company that you want to use to calculate your numbers. We were very close to all these numbers, but we really wanted a second opinion to validate these numbers. And I think you have that memo from NewGen in front of you for that.
Would it have been a better usage of our time and energy to use another company or use NewGen?
It would be to use NewGen, because they've had all of our numbers. They have a large database. There's, with the 3,300 customers, it is, so they had, the learning curve is over. They were able to turn this around quickly, where if we went to anybody else, it would have taken us weeks and months to get them up to speed for us.
Question?
Thank you for that. Whatever method we go with today, are we going to be able, this may be a question for the town manager, for our chair, or maybe our attorney. Would, would we be able to change that approach down the line, let's say if a big business were to leave in a few years? Could we, I don't see a reason why we couldn't reevaluate this if we needed to in the future, if needed, obviously.
Yes, I think, this thinking on my feet, I think that would be true, that this would probably be evaluated probably yearly to see where we stand for this.
Okay. Anybody else? Rachel? Green? Here?
So wait until they're done?
I think, are you, are you, is there more to your presentation?
Yeah, Dave has a sample bill. I don't have it in my PowerPoint.
We have it right there.
Okay. We're pulling it up now.
So this is just a, this is just a mock bill? Sorry.
Is it, I can't read it. Is it showing the bond cost?
So it's just a question of where it's going to be placed on the bill. So the regular account summary and the current quarterly charges, those are your normal billing stuff. The interest charge, if there was anything, would be that next line. And then the miscellaneous charge credit, so under miscellaneous charges, that's where anything that has to do with the bond or any extra charges would appear there. And then obviously, the bottom right shows your total bill. So it's just a question of showing it where it would be placed on the bill if it should pass, and whatever method we use.
Okay.
And we're going to leave that as miscellaneous charges? Is that how we're going to title it?
Currently, we're in the process of changing our business software, so, but the current software, yes, that's what it would be charged, it would be under that miscellaneous charge.
Can we break it up?
I mean, we can change for the programming, sorry.
We need it. We need a separate line item.
Well, that would be the separate line item, yes.
The software only permits miscellaneous charge. That's, that's what we have, that's how it has to be labeled, is that right?
We can approach the company and see if we can have that program rewritten to change it to what we need.
Through the chair. That is, that's 7363.
Just a fictitious number.
That would just be just the bond part of it. Nothing else.
Right, I just threw a number in there. That's not an actual number. That was just a-
No, I get that.
But that's where it would appear.
The word miscellaneous is a little screwed up, that's all.
Well, we're going to look into changing it to what it needs to be appropriated, so everybody can clearly understand it.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chairwoman, just as an alternative, we could always throw a single-page mailer in there that identifies that line under for further clarification, but we are looking with the, to work with the software company to better identify that line, so it's clear.
Yeah, that's, that's a necessity.
Yes.
Whatever method we use, the charge related to the bond, is it only going to be current customers, or will it include new customers as well? A new house is built, are they going to have the same charge?
If they're a customer, it would apply.
Yeah, so, any customer, okay.
Through the chair. Can I just get a clarification on how many ratepayers there are? Because the slide said 4,300, but I thought there was 4,500?
3184 residential and 1091 commercial industrial.
I'm sorry, 3184-
Residential.
Residential and?
1,091.
1,091 commercial.
Commercial and industrial.
Okay. Okay, and then my next question is, Jerry, it sounds like you're, you say you're leaning towards, or you support the hybrid?
I support both the usage base and the hybrid. I don't support the equal share. And I know with the hybrid, we're trying to take care of the larger customers, and we're actually hurting the smaller residential customers, you know, for that. So I think it'll be good to be debated for that, only because, you know, we lose one large customer, it'll be hundreds of residential equivalents that would be leaving the system. But as we stated, it could be evaluated, you know, each year or every other year on, if we did lose a large customer.
Could it be possible, instead of having $150, that commercial customers have a higher flat rate and residential customers have a lower flat rate?
I think it's also based on just sheer numbers, because we have three to one, we have three residential units for every commercial industrial unit. So I think the flat rate should stay, you know, the same throughout that part.
Okay. No, go ahead.
Your mic. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it's Mark. But as we move to the new software, we're going to have, we'll have better abilities to kind of adjust this bill and make it more accurate, but we're aware of the importance of this, and we're working towards making sure that we could solve and clarify as we move forward.
Through the chair. Along the lines of kind of a different fixed cost for residential versus commercial, would we have, I know we don't have the information in front of us, but would we have the ability to charge the, called the bond recovery, the payment on the bond, similar to how the current utility bills are based, where based on the size of your connection, there's a fixed cost plus your usage? Is that something that is possible in the software? I know that's not one of the three scenarios, but it's kind of the hybrid approach, but instead of a fixed 150, it's still, you know, it's staggered up, so those larger users that probably have a larger pipe will have a larger fixed cost versus that flat across the board.
Yeah, that would stay in place, a larger user does have a higher-
But can we, as far as the bond costs, could that, using the hybrid method, but instead of a flat 150, each sized pipe has their separate fixed cost?
That's another way that we could, this is great, the discussion, because it's really like a fourth method that we could evaluate for that. But right now, the larger uses do pay a lot more for the size of pipe they have coming in their building, besides the usage fee.
Dave, I don't know if you have to back me up on that. Of course I'll back you.
Yeah.
The, yeah, I mean, the whole thing is, we chose the 150 as a flat rate based on the overall number of customers. And it's a question of, like Jerry just said, the usage that a commercial or industrial uses, they're paying, you know, so it's a flat fee for everybody, and then the usage is that part of the revenue. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I was just saying, the, kind of the way that the water and sewers currently build, it's usage, but that fixed cost is based on size of the pipe, not commercial versus residential, not flat across the board. It's staggered up for those larger users.
Correct.
They would pay a larger fixed cost.
Through the chair. Yes. I'm just wondering how confident you are in the $6 million figure from the Fire District?
We haven't, we're meeting with them on Friday to discuss that with them.
Okay.
Maria, may I ask, the $5 million payment that was submitted?
Yes.
You explained how you were precisely and strategically applying that.
Mm-hmm.
Have we been able to confirm with Waterbury that they did actually apply it as requested?
So we're waiting on the next billing cycle, because we requested the receipt with the next billing, so as soon as Water and Sewer receives it, we're going to make sure that they applied it correctly. Thank you. You're welcome.
That's it. Okay, we ready for a motion?
Just to be clear for the record, based on what Jonathan was asking, the way that customers are charged now, there's a flat rate based on the pipe size, that's going to continue to be in effect. It's just, this is in addition, whatever method we choose would be-
Correct.
-in addition to that. We're not altering the way that it's always been charged, is that right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Another quick question. Right now, we're estimating right around the 300 million gallons of water. As you all know, our water prices are, we'll just say, double, triple over the next year or two. I can only assume that many users will try to cut back on their water as much as they can, because, I mean, my, me personally, my water bill is kind of flat year-round. The usage part of it is kind of minimal, it's the fixed cost that kind of is the bulk of it. And in the summer, I could be watering my grass, and it doesn't add that much to the bill. When the rates start going up and additional charges on usage go up, people are going to cut back. I can only assume that if that $300 million, sorry, 300 million gallons of water drops down to, let's say, $250 million of water, we're just going to have to adjust the price accordingly to make up for that difference, so that-
Correct.
-that rate usage will, as we use less, we'll have to charge more type of scenario, right?
Everything would have to be evaluated as things occur.
Yep. And I guess the same scenario is if you lose a large user, same type of thing, is usage drops, the rates will have to go up.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve-
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to ask a question. Ken, can I, can I ask?
Oh, yes, sure.
Can I ask one more question before we do that? So given what Jonathan just said, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It sounds like his water stays relatively stable. So how much can people really reduce their water usage? I mean, I would think they would be limited in how much they could actually really reduce it, you know, in terms of like, they're still going to shower, flush the toilet. I, I just ask this, because I like, you know, obviously, just, you guys are the experts, so just want to know what the reality of that is.
Well, as we say, that's, it fluctuates on the individual users. We, you know, we have no control over somebody wanting to conserve the water.
Right.
You know, it's just a question of if there's over conservation, then that's a revenue issue. Then that would have to be reevaluated to take that into account.
Right, I guess I'm just trying to understand-
Probably more the loss of users. If a house is vacant, a business is vacant, you know, a car wash is no longer in business, that type of thing, that usage would drop pretty significantly.
Okay. All right, I'm just thinking, like, I mean, there's only, you can only go so long before you have to flush your toilet, right? And you need to take a shower, and so I-
Madam Chairwoman, if I could add some more context to this, we could always ask the WSA to report back to us, you know, biannually, to give us a report on how all this is working, so that we could stay in touch and make sure that, you know, our, the way we are choosing to repay this, that we're monitoring that, you know, whether it's bi-annual or, you know, annual, whatever you'd like to do.
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay.
Along those lines, Mark, so if, on our bond cost line item, that would be on the bill, would we have the ability to literally reevaluate it every, every quarter, every year, every whatever, saying we used X amount of gallons, we, based on, I'm just making numbers up, but based on 75 million gallons for this quarter, this is what the rate would need to be, and either quarterly or annually, that rate would slightly change, but it's all based on usage? Or would it need to be fixed until there is another vote to change it to something else?
It, I mean, let's face it, the water usage changes in the wintertime to the summertime, so I think we'd have to be careful when things were reevaluated and leave that up to the water department.
No, but what I'm getting at is, if we need to, if we need to come up with, I'm just making numbers up, but $2 million worth of revenue on this line item, and obviously usage fluctuates, are we going to, do we have the ability to say, okay, each quarter, we want to collect $500,000, so that we can almost guarantee every year, we're getting our $2 million or whatever dollar amount we need?
I think-
Or will we need to kind of act after the fact-
Mark.
...and change rates to make it work?
That's, that's, that's unknown, and the whole thing is, as Mark's trying to say, it has to be reevaluated, because the whole thing is, if we set the plan or the strategy as how we're going to proceed, if that changes due to the lack of revenue, we still have the bill to pay. So any revenue shortfall, that would- So any revenue shortfall, that would have to be reevaluated and then come up with whatever is going to correct that.
And I guess my question is, can we almost do it in real time, so every quarter, we're, we're generating our $500 million? Or is it some-
I can, I can tell you, I can go out on a limb right now and tell you, if the numbers don't come in as they're supposed to because of conservation, yes, we are going to come back to address it. Well, we have to.
And, and that's why the hybrid scenario at $150 per user kind of helps steady part of that, because it's a combination of the fixed $150 plus usage as opposed to pure usage. Because, yeah, I could look at tables and books, are we, they're going to say 2%, 3%, 5%, 10%. You know there's going to be water conservation going on. But that's why a hybrid kind of helps stable that part of the-
I do like the hybrid method. I don't like the hybrid method as presented, where it's just flat, but I do like that thought process.
Personally, I think the, the hybrid method, 150, I mean, when you divide that up into quarters, it's not going to make a big difference.
I'd be surprised. It actually does.
So this, there is a process in place, just as there's going to be a public hearing tomorrow to discuss the rate changes. That's the process that would have to happen, as we evaluate in real time or as close as we can to that, whether there's shortage of revenue, we have to go through that process. So even though you're voting tonight, we then have to move this back to the WSA to have another public hearing if or when the bond passes, the referendum passes. So again, it goes in front of the public for them to understand what we're doing. We could present it to them and coordinate that presentation to you, so that you're kept in the loop as to how the process is working.
Thank you. Are we set? Ken?
I'll make a motion to approve item two, usage base approach as the payment method to pay the bond.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I think we've had discussion. All those in favor of the usage message, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.